Called the meeting on Milton Common Council for April fifth, twenty twenty two to order. And the first item is the roll call, Mike. Council President Olson.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Kuhn.
Here.
He's sorry, he's absent. Uh, West. Probably temporarily absent. Ramsey.
Here.
And Sullivan.
Here.
And I'll let you know when Susan gets on the call.
Okay, thank you, Mike. It is seven thirty, well, actually the public comments, so. Uh, while it's limited to thirty minutes per speaker, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or if you're on telephone, try to reach somehow. So right now I don't see any raised hands. Mike, do you see any raised hands?
I do not. Alan Cosklin is.
Okay, okay. Alan Cosklin, please go ahead. You have three minutes and uh. Um, Mike will keep track of the time. Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, thanks. I'm Alan Cosklin, seventy-two eleven Elmwood Avenue. Like to thank everybody for their work and collaboration on the chicken ordinance. I still think it's overly restrictive and absurdly verbose, but we might be nearing something I could support. To that end, I have three specific comments. One's a minor change to coop placement, and two are specific parts that either need to be struck or defined clearly and objectively. First, five C two, I'd like to suggest that distance from a coop be measured to the nearest primary dwelling unit on each abutting property, so we can encourage both chicken keeping and accessory dwelling units. I'd like to see grandfathering like we normally have in zoning requirements to handle the case where in a budding property expands their dwelling unit. Second, five B regarding crowing hens, I want to make sure that can't mean any arbitrary chicken sound, but rather the accepted definition of crowing, which is the cockadoodle do generally associated with a rooster. Not sure how a lawyer might define that, but it might bring some needed levity to literally see cockadoodle do in a city ordinance. Lastly, five C three, the reflecting noise bit, this is the most problematic. This whole complaint I heard regarding this was about the slope of my coop's roof and. While I questioned the validity of that, I already remedied remedied it in two different ways, but now it seems like we're trying to arbitrarily include other structures too. This is pretty unreasonable as none of us are building curved ban shells around our coops and truly directing sound. And there's no way for us to know it's acceptable. Like, how close can a coop be to reflecting structure before it matters? How far does the reflecting structure need to be from adjacent dwellings? What angle of reflection matters? What if there's another structure on the other side of the coop from reflecting structure? If I move my coop, will it reflect off my two-story house and over my garage, et cetera, et cetera? Are we going to require that a building inspector is also going to be a sound engineer or to hire one? Without these parts struck or defined objectively, this ordinance still unreasonably affects chicken owners and gives us no objective way to remedy complaints. Therefore, in my case, it still constitutes a chicken ban, and some of my chickens almost certainly have to be culled since they're retired and unable to get along with younger flock. Thank you again for your work on this and for your integrity as we work towards a reasonable resolution, whether that's continuing to make revisions, starting over from a truly minimalist ordinance or striking this down entirely.
Thank you, Alan. Next one is Sandy.
Set to roll. Gerdip, it's Harvey. You hear me?
Oh, okay, Harvey, so I.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm speaking in behalf of Sandy. Yeah, I'm Harvey Woody, and my wife Sandy and I live at seventy-one twenty-eight Hubbard Avenue. We are here talking in favor of the chicken ordinance as it stands. After sitting through the L and O meeting, the common council meeting, and the special editing meeting. We now have a newfound appreciation of all the tireless work put in by everyone involved. A tip of the hat and a big thank you for that. Just a little recap in case you forgot. We are the people with the chicken coop just behind our back fence facing our house. We hope you had a chance to watch and listen to the video I recorded last Thursday. Hopefully it helps you understand our situation. It is a small example of the commotion that the chickens have been known to cause that goes on for five, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes or more. As it turns out, we are unwilling participants in the urban chicken experience. We weren't asked to participate. We weren't consulted in any way, shape, or form. We were thrust into this position. We emailed our neighbor, per his request, several times eight years ago. Expressed our legitimate and valid concerns. In the end, the response was basically T S, deal with it. We did not ask to be in this position. We do not want to be in this position. We choose not to participate in the urban chicken experiment. Up until now. This, this choice has not been ours. Unlike the common coun- unlike us, the common council does have a choice. Will you choose the same response as our neighbor? T S, deal with it? Or will you choose to let us finally have a choice in this situation? The choice is yours to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Harvey. The next one is Hans Hilbert. Hans?
Thanks, Gerdip, and common council members. Hans Hilbert, eighty-two oh nine Cedar Trail. Um, I, I also feel that the chicken keeping ordinance, while a bit overreaching yet, is coming into a format that. I can live, live with. Um, I, I question the city's. Desire to have it be a yearly license requirement. It, it seems that that's going to put a burden on. Staff to be doing something on a yearly basis, and it seems like these licenses could be granted perpetuity. Until conditions change that would warrant a, a new license to be issued or for a much longer time before they expire. Alleging the burden on the building inspector department and their staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Next one is Edgar Spalding.
Hello, we have to stop meeting like this, everybody. No, it's good to see everyone. Uh, thank you um for letting me say a few words. Uh, I appreciate all the work that's gone into the shaping of this ordinance, and it represents compromise. My preference would still that there be no ordinance, um, but if there has to be an ordinance, I would uh. Recommend the, that the part about the sound deflection be removed because I don't see how that's anything but subjective. And I think Mr. Cosklin said exactly my words that I was going to say about. If somebody says that their shed is, that their coop is reflecting noise onto the neighbor, and the other neighbor says, no, it isn't. Then what do you do about it? Hire some expert to come do an analysis? It doesn't, just doesn't, it seems to me to just be a source of problems. The second part I would strike is this, is this notion of a fee that comes every year. I, I understand why fees would be charged for some things like for a dog fee. I suppose it goes, the fees go to help. Uh, put up all the trash cans where the poop goes and the, and the handy um. Uh, plastic bags and things like that, but I don't see where any rationale for charging a chicken fee. What does the city do? For the chicken keeper with that fee? It seems to me it's only a disincentive to have chickens and basically a nuisance that probably the city doesn't. Even want to deal with tracking down everybody who did or didn't pay their five dollars. So the, it just doesn't seem like good public policy to me. Um, the last, the reason why I think there should be no ordinance is just if anybody studied this problem. And found out that in the last several years, there were two complaints. Uh, that would be by my view, the definition of a non-problem. So we've had all this great upset. Over something that by most reasonable standards would be perfect evidence of there not being a problem. So I think the city could do without an ordinance at all, but if there is to be one, those changes that I. Uh, highlighted would be what I would take out. Thank you.
Thank you, Edgar. Next one is Tyler Amric.
Hi Tyler, I'm at seventy-three twenty Elmwood Avenue, and uh. I just wanted to, first of all, thank uh the mayor and the alders who have recently um. Uh, brought in uh chicken keepers and input uh from all different citizens regarding this ordinance. Uh, it started out. Uh, in my view, a, a poor manner, but it's uh moving in a, in a much better direction. So I appreciate. The work that's been done by everybody to make this ordinance much more reasonable and fair. Uh, and uh for all sides. That, that's great, and thank you for your hard work in that. I still think there are items that are very subjective that were mentioned previously already regarding. Sound amplification and so forth that uh maybe sounds nice on paper, but is extremely subjective and should be removed. Uh, but again, overall, I'm. Uh, glad to see this ordinance be much more reasonable and level-headed than how it started out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Next one is Karen Forlong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and also wanted to um mention my gratitude and thanks to the alders and to the mayor who worked on the most recent. Um, version of the ordinance here. I'll also concur with the other speakers um that this one is a lot more reasonable. I think um. You know, we've been able to finally have the input of the, those who keep backyard chickens in the city of Middleton be heard. Um, I also will note some of the prior comments, you know, one of the reasons that this ordinance is coming into existence is on the basis of those two complaints. I'll spare you all the statistics that I've quoted in my prior uh public comments, but um, you know, the fact that the disagreements. Over chicken noise and odor and so on weren't able to be solved with the existing nuisance um uh code. You know, are we going to end up in the same situation with the ordinance as is written? You know, I, I do have concern. Um, from both sides, just in terms of the enforceability of the reflecting sound portion of the ordinance. And will that put an undue burden on city staff who are expected to adjudicate that? Um, so I think that is, you know, overall, it's said much more reasonable ordinance. But when we've got some subjective manners in there, that is going to raise some issues with um enforceability. And will we end up back at square zero? So that's just a comment there, but overall, thank you to the uh, to the mayor and to the alders who've worked on this. Mayor Bar, you were spotted stalking the neighborhood and investigating the coops and chatting to, to folks here, so that's really appreciated. Great to see, you know, you on the street um looking at these issues. So thank you to all, and that's my comment for this evening.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? If you're on a telephone, start speaking. Otherwise, please raise your hand. Anyone else who may want to speak at this time? Mike, do you see anybody?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to close that part of the meeting here, and we are going through the next item here. And uh. That is the public hearing. So this is the public hearing for Mediterranean Grill LLC doing business at Thaza Mediterranean Kitchen. They are requesting a class B permitted mark beverage and class B intoxicating liquor license. They are located at nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred Kyoga Street, number one oh five. Uh, and Mohammed Enwe is at three eight zero six Tobin Drive. Madison, Wisconsin. He is the agent. Anyone at this time want to speak either in favor of this license? Anyone, please raise your hand, or if you're on telephone, start speaking. Mike, do you see anybody? I don't see anyone.
I do not.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we are going to the. Uh, go to the approval of the consent agenda and need a motion to prove it has four items, the common council minutes of March fifteenth. Special work group meeting minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Order of the bills to be paid as proved by the finance committee and Mediterranean Grill, which we just had a public hearing about, the four items. Need a motion to prove.
This, this is Alder Robert Burke. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Need a second.
This is Mark. I'll second.
Thanks for not leaving me hang there, Mark.
Okay.
Our last hurrah.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Okay, although in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. We are on to the proclamation, and this is, the first one is National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. I'm going to hear it. So proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas. The Milton Police Department Communication Center plays a wider role in the protection of human life and property in our community. And whereas telecommunicators of the Wisconsin Police Department endure long hours, abnormal work schedules. And handle frequent life and death emergencies while achieving high standards and performing their duties in a dedicated. Diligent and compassionate manner. And whereas. The safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent on the quality and accuracy of the information. obtained from people who contact the Milton Police Department Communication Centers. And whereas. Uh, telecommunications are the initial first responder to every call. And often the first critical contact that residents and visitors in Milton have with emergency services. And whereas the staff of Milton Police Department Communication Center have a combined total of over one hundred fifty. Years of service to the Milton community. And whereas each member of the communication center has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism. During the performance of their job in the past year. And whereas our public safety communication personnel serve the public twenty-four hours a day. Three hundred sixty-five a year in countless ways, oftentimes without due recognition by those who receive their services. Now therefore, the city of Milton declares the week of April tenth through April seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. To be National Public Safety Telecommuters Week in the city of Milton. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and residents safe. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting with Milton Common Council on the fifth day of April twenty twenty-two. Need a motion to approve.
This is Alder Robert Burke. I would make the motion to approve this resolution.
This is Emily.
Sorry, proclamation, please.
Okay.
This is Albert Kuhn. I'll second it.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, um, we have our. Uh, telecommunicator supervisor Keith Cleesby is on the call with us. And Keith was newly promoted to that position, so first of all, congratulations, Keith. And, you know, thanks, as you see from the council and the mayor, and all of us who appreciate the work that you guys do day in and day out, night in and night out.
Uh huh. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead, and if you want to say a few words, Keith, go ahead.
Sure, I just appreciate the, the recognition and for you guys taking the time to, to read and adopt the proclamation, recognizing the work of, of all of our dispatch staff. Um, that is highly deserving of the recognition. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations, Keith, and thank you. Okay, although then, anyone else, Mike, want to say anything? Any other words or whatever?
No.
Okay, so although in favor of adopting this proclamation, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. We are on to the next item. That is the old business, the first reading of an ordinance to permit keeping of chickens. Who is going to take it?
I'm happy to go again. This is Robert Burke. I would make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance for the keeping of chickens. And. Just leave it there for right now.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Sure.
Okay, motion has been made. It has been seconded. And Susan West would like to speak, and then Mark, elder Susan West.
Okay. I heard some really good comments tonight that got me thinking a little bit more about this. And especially in terms of the ban shell effect. What I'm realizing, and I'm not a chicken owner, but my thoughts are, is it roosters and crowing hens that cause the problem? And if so, since we're not allowing them, do we need to continue, include the ban shell clause? The other one is, I'm thinking the annual fee probably could be dropped as being requested. Uh. We do charge a dog fee, but that's also to be sure they have a rabies um. Have been vaccinated against rabies. So I don't know if we need to have annual registration of chickens. We certainly do need to have the fee for um the building inspector to inspect the facilities. So I would. Like to suggest that we strike the ban shell effect and the annual fee.
Okay, so need a. Is that your motion? We need a second for that.
I'll second that, if that's a motion.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion by elder Susan West?
This is Robert. I, I will just throw out that I don't think. The. Rooster or crowing hen thing is, is interchangeable with the reflective sound or ban shell effect, or whatever you want to call it. Um. I mean, they're both going for a sound issue, but um. For instance, uh, you know, if, if I talk with a, a normal speaking voice. You'll hear me, but you won't maybe hear me twenty, thirty feet away. If I talk that same level of volume, but I talk through a megaphone. It's going to redirect, you know, all the sound waves in one direction, and you'll hear me easily twenty feet away, or forty feet, or sixty feet. Um, that's what was intended, I think, by the, 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 the reflecting sound issue, and that. Isn't tied to whether the, whether the, the foul in question is making a, a cockadoodle do noise or a. Completely different noise. It's, it's more a, a function of the geometry of the, the building, but um. Or the building, the, the coop and the surrounding building, really. Um, with that being said, you know, I just wanted to clarify that as, as. Everybody's making their, their uh decisions here.
Okay, anyone who wants to speak on this motion by elder Sullivan? I'm, I'm, I'll do rest, I'm sorry.
Well. You know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in here. I'm waiting, but I was gonna say some other things, but. I think Robert's exactly right. If, if people remember going to the Capitol Building, there are spots where you can talk in the Capitol Building. And no one can hear you except for where that sound is reflected, two or, two or three stories above. So it really is. About eliminating the noise that's reflected to the neighbors, and I think people need to understand that as much as. As there's a, a desire to have chickens in, in the city. We, we all have neighbors that we need to respect as well. And it, it seems to me that some of the behavior here, and I'm not saying that it's everybody. But. It seems to me that we just need to remember that. Our personal desires have impact on our neighbors as well. And, and we kind of have to, to make sure that we're keeping track of that and not be a nuisance to them. Right? If you want to be a nuisance in your own house, that's fine, as long as no one can hear it. But when you introduce that to, to neighbors, that's not being a good citizen. Um, in any case, my questions about the, the other piece of the ordinance relate to just getting clarification on, on the. Um, the requirements relating to the property lines. Um, can somebody just, just remind us what the. In terms of the chicken coops and the chicken runs. What is the requirement in terms of a, of distance away from the property line by, by virtue of the zoning ordinances?
Matt, maybe you are the best person to address it. Matt Fleming?
Yeah, um, yeah, what we've, we've essentially made the coops, everything consistent with what accessory buildings. Need to be. Um, so that is. I don't have the.
Two feet, two feet.
Two feet, right. Um, and then, uh, if I'm not mistaken, we, we removed, there's no setback or anything relating to what might be a run, as a matter of fact, an entire fenced yard. Can constitute the run. That's just a, a matter of requiring that the chickens be confined um to the yard. So really, it's the coop that has the setback issue.
And so.
And then twenty-five feet, then also from the, from dwellings.
Right, so if you have, and this is the concern I have, if you have a, a principal dwelling. Of the neighbor that has twenty-five feet from. The principal dwelling to the lot line. What we're saying is that the chicken owner could put that coop two feet. From the lot line on his property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the chicken run can be right up to the property line.
Correct.
Seems to me that. There's, well. It, it may be indifferent to the, the zoning, but it seems to me that you would want. A minimum setback of ten feet from the property line or twenty-five feet from the nearest principal dwelling. For both the coop and the chicken run. In order to try and minimize some of this noise and order to minimize whatever other issues there are with having chickens in an urban environment. Right? If you had a dog and the dog was at the fence line barking all night long, everyone can agree that that's not right. It's no different than having chickens on the property line cackling all the time.
So that, that's true. I, I think we, we did have, um, yeah, a similar setback for runs in an earlier draft. Um, I, I think the thinking in removing that was that particularly in situations where you have essentially a fenced-in yard acting as a. As a run that you wouldn't necessarily have a concentration of chickens right on the property line, you know, although clearly. They could very well gather there. There's nothing preventing that, but um. I, I guess the idea was that uh it seemed a, a lot, much less likely problem than putting the coop there where they, you know, are going to be more concentrated. Um. But that's, that's one of the compromises that was made during the process, but uh we certainly, when the, the initial draft certainly treated the setbacks similarly.
Mark, it's, it's usually either or, they usually, either, most ordinances that I've seen are, they're either twenty-five feet from the dwellings. Neighboring dwellings or, or a certain setback from the uh property lines.
Mark, you have more questions?
Yeah, I, I think that, I'll give up for now.
Okay. Uh, okay, anyone else who want to speak on the motion by? Okay, anyone else who wants to speak on the motion by Susan?
Gerdip, my hand, my hand is up to you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, to Susan's point, this ban shell has nothing to do with the roosters or the the crowing hens. It doesn't. It's just the noise of chickens, the chickens in general and how it projects out into the neighboring property. It it's not about the ban shell of it. I did want to touch on a few other things. Right now, and I've asked different chicken owners and they say there's a couple dozen coops in town. Couple dozen is what I what I've heard. And I've also heard that in my district, there are nine chicken coops. And I had three complaints and we talk about, you know, the statistics or whatever, but that's a third of the chicken coops. Were problematic to the point where the neighbor's rights were being infringed on and being able to enjoy their property. And that to me is not an insignificant number. And I think that this is important and and I agree that a lot of this maybe had to do with people, the pandemic, people being home. I know some of the chicken owners, they started the practice of keeping more chickens while they were home more. But that doesn't still change the fact that when you have three coops, I don't think it's insignificant. Maybe that they were happening during the pandemic, that might have played into this, but we really should, I think, put some guardrails on this. I always remember my dad, we'd go walking down in the valley or whatever, and he'd always go check the fences and he would just say, remember, good good fences make good neighbors. And it's not about the fences. It's just that you have guardrails on things. You have an expectation of who does what. And I just think this is such a valuable learning experience. We talked about the kids learning where their food source comes from. But it's also here's your food source, but how this could impact other people also. So I just think these all play together and there's a there's a lot of lessons that could be learned from chicken keeping, but let's remember that the how they affect their neighbors is one of them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Next one is Katie Olson.
Thanks. I am just concerned, I don't understand how this sound reflection detail can be enforced. I honestly don't understand how that can be quantified and made in in enforced. I I agree that we're getting close to something that is a good ordinance. It's just not ready yet. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Emily Cool and then Susan West.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I'm gonna second what Katie was saying about the enforcement on the sound. I know a few others have said that already. I am concerned about that because it does seem yeah, to be we're just back in the in the exact same spot. The second thing I want to talk about is I've been hearing this chicken experiment, this urban chicken experiment, as if this is new. So I just want to share that when my son was a toddler, I saw it at the children's museum in downtown Madison on top of a rooftop. That was my introduction to urban chicken experiment. To me, that is, that is really out there. Having it in a backyard, more reasonable. But I say that because growing up, I'm from St. Louis and my grandmother lived in downtown St. Louis in a fancy part of town and underneath her house, she had a chicken coop. So if y'all think this is a brand new thing, in the nineteen forties, she built a chicken coop in an urban center. It's not new. Y'all can have an argument about that another day. No one needs to respond to it. Just telling you it's not new. The last thing is, Mark, you brought up about the barking dogs. That's reasonable. How do we deal with that? I want to actually ask that question to the city attorney. How do we deal with the barking dogs? Because his argument is is that we should move it further away, but you can't do that with dogs.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Next one is Susan West.
Oh, no, I want that answer.
Okay, I'm sorry. Please go ahead and answer.
I'm not sure I understand. How do we enforce dark barking dog complaints?
Barking dog complaints.
Well, typically you get the oftentimes you have more than one neighbor complaining about the dog that's that habitually barks. It's been a long time since I've enforced a complaint, but you know, and oftentimes you have an officer go out and if it's happening regularly, you know, usually can have somebody go out and they will observe it and and issue a citation. I think one of the issues here with chickens is not you know, the crowing and and you know, rooster stuff. I mean, I I think that, well, crowing hens, I think, would be enforced similarly. You demonstrate that you have a crowing hen by the same sorts of observations, but I think the other sort of noise that happens is probably a little lower level irritations and probably does not happen on a consistent basis the same way. Kind of what I was trying to explain in my in my memo that I submitted before the last meeting that the impacts aren't necessarily always observable on demand in the same way that that some of these other offenses are, which makes it difficult to enforce using some of the same tactics that you might use for barking dogs. But barking dogs can be, you know, difficult as well if 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 it's not a regular occurrence and you can't get you know, multiple verification from different people about what's going on.
And what would that citation be for?
Specifically in Middleton, I I imagine we have something that's a you know, dog barking, you know. Yeah, I can't think of with a language that we that I typically see. It's kind of escaping me, but usually it's a dog specific ordinance, but I I've I've never done the prosecutions in Middleton. I've never been asked about I've done a lot of dog stuff in Middleton, but never had to deal with barking dog situations. So I I don't know what our specific ordinance says, but there's typically an ordinance that that talks about, you know, dogs barking and disturbing neighbors, similar to unreasonable noise ordinance language, except it's specifically tailored to dogs. It's what I've typically seen.
Emily, is that good enough? I can tell you something. I I think there's a half hour policy. If the dog is barking longer than a half hour, then you call police and you know, it's very rare that that happens, so.
Would that be under the nuisance ordinance?
I don't know. Jim Scholander, you know?
I'm trying to find it right now.
There's nothing to do with me. That would be the police department.
Okay.
Here, Jeremy Geisler here with the police department. I might be able to answer some of the questions as well.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So Matt's still looking for it, but and it's been a while since I have to admit that since I have dealt with any of these as well since I've been on the road, but generally speaking, we have a prohibited noise disturbance that deals with the majority of just generically any noises. Some of those are specifically included, such as construction noise that's specifically addressed for hours and whatnot. But generally speaking, everything is dealt with on a reasonableness standard. As far as what is quote unquote reasonable and what Matt was describing is frequently what's taken into account. There's no official time limit or anything. But it it is, you know, if there's multiple complaints, if it's an ongoing issue, generally speaking, for any noise issue that we're dealing with, it starts with a warning. If it's an ongoing issue, we continue and work towards citations if we're not getting complaints voluntarily.
So Jeremy, we haven't had that problem in Middleton, or did you?
For chickens specifically?
Yeah.
For dogs? Sure, we get we get barking dog complaints all the time.
Okay.
I shouldn't say all the time. That's an exaggeration, but we do get them.
Okay.
Quick question for Jeremy. Jeremy, a few years ago, there was a nightclub across from Costco.
Yep.
And I believe there were, aside from the violence complaints, there were also noise complaints there. Weren't those measured by some decimeter for noise at the lot line?
There there is a standard and I I don't know, I can't remember what the number is. It's like sixty or sixty five decibels at the lot line. We do have a way to measure that for noise. That's that specifically was a music related issue at the hotel there from the Bluechow Club, which turned into the other one. I can't remember right now. Matt's probably intimately familiar with that one. So so yes, to answer your question for those specific noise issues, there is a decibel limit. That's generally what we deal with specifically for amplified sound permitting.
Wouldn't the same thing apply generally speaking to this concern about having that ban shell effect for chickens? Wouldn't wouldn't you measure that objectively as a as a decimal level, as a decibel level at the lot line of the complainant?
Well, I guess that would depend on how the the ordinance is written. I guess I'm not seeing anything with that. For the for the amplified sound, it is specifically written in that ordinance.
Yeah, well, as to the the ban, I mean, certainly I think a decibel meter could help to help as evidence to show that a ban shell effect is is happening in in a certain circumstance. I think more likely, the the ban shell issue would be considered at the time of initial application when Jim is looking at things and where the sighting is and use that to try to encourage people to move, you know, orient the the thing differently if it is kind of constructed where you could have that effect to cite it over a little someplace if it looks like it's right up against a garage and so forth. And that's how I think the the main way that would be used in the ordinance. You know, if this comes to an existing coop that has not been approved for the location, yeah, it probably might end up being a combination of things. That that provision alone, you know, might not be you know, may not be cut and dried. We probably would want to try to rely on some gather some other objective evidence to see how we would enforce that. But I think the primary value of that is to you just give Jim a criteria to look at when he's looking at the sighting of these things and and try to head that off before they're even put there.
Like I found the thank you. It's seventeen four J. Says the keeping or harboring of any animal or fowl, which by frequent or habitual howling, yelping, barking, crowing, or making of other noises shall greatly annoy or disturb a neighborhood or any considerable number of persons within the city.
Thank you, Emily. So I I do want to add just a couple of things here. I asked Matt, Matt Fleming, that is, if there's any other city, either in Dane County City Village or or a town, either in Dane County or or even in Wisconsin, which has this kind of language in the ordinance. And I I guess he told me he wasn't aware of it and he didn't look into it. So so I think, you know, it it looks like a way, unless you have a different answer, Matt, it's way over the top.
Which language, Gerdip? Which language?
Oh, the ban shell fact. So I did ask him, so he didn't I I don't know if there's any ordinance, any chicken ordinance which has that language, so.
No, I well, yeah, I don't I don't know that there is. It was not something that I that I that I that caught my attention when I first looked at the many ordinances we reviewed. This was introduced later, my language as a as a solution to a problem that was brought to my attention. And I did not then go back and try to verify whether it was anything and anything else, but it was likely not in anything that I had reviewed since it didn't make it into any of the earlier drafts.
Well, I all the ones which I have looked at, I did not find it. And I have asked repeatedly, let's do something very simple like the Madison City of the two hundred fifty thousand people or San Prairie or or for that matter, we're on or Pittsburgh and you know, I I'm direct with those issues. In any case, I wanted to let you know that at least to anybody's knowledge, the one which is the ordinance which have been sent to me and I looked at, there's no such thing. So the next one is Susan West and then Kathy Olson.
Okay, I think what I want to say, if Jim Scholander is doing his job on approving the sighting of the chicken coop, that should take care of the ban shell effect so that we don't have it.
Sorry, go ahead.
In terms of just noise of birds, I mean, I hear lots of birds in the summer that are native birds chirping away. I think if we're getting rid of the roosters and crowing hens, it's not going to be an overly loud noise other louder than various fowl. And here in Middleton Hills, we've got, I see every morning, ten wild turkeys coming to my neighbor's yard. Or if you live near the stormwater detention ponds, there's ducks, geese, herons, all sorts of things down there. And we aren't getting you know, complaints about those. And these are in yards that frankly, the yard is not big enough to even put a chicken coop in it. So we've got fowl that are in very close proximity to people. And I also doubt that it's going to be, you know, regular hens just clucking, as I remember from my grandmother's chicken lot, was not particularly noisy and certainly nowhere near as noisy as my neighbor who hires a commercial landscaping company who spends forty minutes with a ride around lawnmower. Which I find disturbing, but I would never call and complain about it. So I think we need to be reasonable and get something that is easy for the police to enforce and that Jim Scholinger can take care of citing the coop twenty five feet away from the neighboring dwelling. And in approving the plan, since he will have a plan, he should be able to advise them to eliminate the ban shell effect. I don't know that we need to make it more complicated.
Yep. Okay, are you done, Elder West?
Yes.
Elder Elder Olson?
Yeah, I have several things I wanted to bring up here. First of all, we talked about dogs barking. Dogs can, if they're barking and they they can be taken inside of the house. Chickens cannot, they don't go inside the house. They are outside animals. Gerdip, once you the ordinance you've looked at, they they're the applications. A lot of them are the applications. And what Emily, what you cited about the just the fouls disturbing a number of people. The way some of these coops are cited, they're right next to someone's home. They're not going to disturb a bunch of different neighbors. They're going to disturb one neighbor. The way they're cited. And that's why that that's not working very well. Jeremy, I would like to ask you, Susan just said, we need something that the police can enforce. Is this is there something that's easy to enforce with this or is this just not an easy thing to enforce?
I think, well, I guess you and I have had that discussion through L and O in the past. I think having an ordinance that specifically addresses any specific issue makes enforcement a little easier. I'm not sure how much the police department will have involvement in enforcement other than potential noise issues. And we'd probably work with Jim and the building inspection department as well.
So specific ordinance would be easier to enforce than just a regular general nuisance kind of thing.
That's my opinion, yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Jim, I I don't know. We've talked a little bit about the sighting of the coops and that would be something when it says in here, have them cited so that they don't reflect. That would be something if it's in the ordinance, you would check as people were applying for their permits?
Correct. If it's if it's written in the ordinance the way it is now, at least I have something I can go back to them with if if the location looks odd. You know, if it's not written in the ordinance, then how, you know, the all the ordinance says then is two feet, twenty five feet. So having that verbiage the way Matt wrote it, now I can at least entertain a discussion with them if the particular site looks like it's going to end up in that echoing
Yeah.
ban shell scenario. I don't like calling it a ban shell, but in that echoing scenario.
And and just the orientation of the coop. Mm-hmm. And, and just the orientation of the coop in general.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Mark, Alder Sullivan?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask Matt similarly the same question. Uh, generally speaking, if you don't specify something that's prohibited, then the side to that is that if it's not specifically prohibited, then by default, it's acceptable?
Well, yeah, I mean, like you said, I, what I was gonna say is, you know, Jim, without this, Jim could certainly be, feel free to offer a lot of suggestions and everything. But yeah, this, this gives uh some authority to, to say, well, you know, there is actually a requirement to the ordinance. I look at this to be sure that these things aren't happening and, and you know, that gives them some teeth to require something to be cited at a, in a place that, that is not likely to cause these issues. So yeah, otherwise, the only two things are the, the distance and setbacks.
Right. So otherwise, what we're, so what we're doing is we're, we're hopefully giving Tim, uh, Jim the tools he needs to proactively stop the problems from recurring. Is that your sentiment on that?
Well, that, that's the intention. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's our job to do that.
And, and then, so I, I just wanted to pick a little bit that the, the examples that Alder West gave about turkeys or geese or ducks are typically transitory, right? Whereas keeping chickens is permanent. And I think you have to understand that. It's that, it's the constant issue of having those birds clucking or whatever they're doing, that's, that is the annoying behavior. It's not, oh, you know what, there's a, there's a sandhill crane and it's waking up in the morning and it's making a ruckus. It goes away, whereas chickens do not. And then lastly, uh, people have talked about the, the fees associated with the, this. And I'm wondering if uh, a, a partial solution or a solution maybe to make that initial application be for three years and that the renewals would not start for three years or four years or five years, just as a, as a way to um to limit the amount of, of record, well, of transactions that occur, right? So that your initial application covers, for example, three to five years and that you get that three-year permit to, to keep chickens. Just throw that out there as, as a possible solution.
Well, I, I would suggest lowering the fee further. I mean, I, Jim can chime in on this, but my impression is, is that too, if you've got different applications at different times and they all are good for three years, you've got a number of different ones that are all going to expire at different times. And it seems to me to create at least in terms of monitoring, a much more difficult situation than if everything is just annual. Um, you know, we did previously have a renewal fee that was higher. I, like I said, I, I, I would defer to Jim, but that's my initial impression that if this is onerous, I, I, it seems to me a lower fee rather than creating the staggered sort of situation um, might be better, but.
The uh, just the keeping the annual renewal fee of five dollars. The sixty-five dollars needs to stay the same.
Yeah, the sixty-five dollars is essentially the, the same as really for sheds and everything and, and probably is what's currently should be charged anyway. This is just making it clear that it should be, yeah, so.
I'm just talking about this five-dollar renewal fee.
Okay, um, Alder West, so you're done and Alder Sullivan, you're done. So next one is Alden Nelson.
Um, thank you. Um, my concern um, about that, the, the ban shell reflecting sound, in addition to how do we enforce it, is that it's sort of subjective to the building inspector knowing all about acoustics. Um, and if we're gonna go on the decibels, if we name a decibel, we make it super quantified, then the ban shell thing doesn't even matter. Because you could, the inspector could suggest that you probably shouldn't put your coop over here because your neighbors may hear it a little bit louder. And then if the decibels are too loud, you're gonna get in trouble. But if it's something that's just um, not subjective, like decibels, then people could put their coops wherever they want, provided they're with it, you know, the, the property brown and the twenty-five away from a, of a building. Um, I know that if it were if I were the one having chickens, I would want to put them out of the wind as much as possible. And that's gonna put them next to my garage. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alden Nelson. Next one is, uh, Alder Buck.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd just like to, we've had a lot of talking here. And I guess I'd just like to go back and say, I want to really thank uh, the, the chicken owners. Um, I feel like, you know, not everybody's getting what they want, but I was so happy and so impressed with the chicken owners who said, I, I strongly disagree with this or this, but we're getting to a point where this is, you know, an acceptable compromise. Not everybody's happy and that's how compromise works a lot. So, but I, I wanna, I do want to thank uh, those people who keep chickens for being part of the uh, process. And, and basically you're pushing us as, as, you know, policymakers to try to get to something better than maybe where we started, because that's how it always works. We, we take a first crack at it and it has to get better from that first time we try. So I really appreciate the fact that we've gotten that feedback and, and, and participation in the process. And thank you. I guess I would just note to my fellow alders, we have something that's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but it has been a compromise between varying viewpoints. And I feel like we may be relitigating some things here that necessarily don't need to be, you know, hashed out quite so detailed tonight. Um, you know, there was a working group that worked on this and I think they did their job and I think it's a reasonable compromise. And I know that's what's, the motion second that I made is, is, has been supplanted by a, a, a um substitute motion and that's fair. But I, I would hope that we can not continue talking about this all night and that maybe we can have a vote pretty soon. But I do just wanna uh, thank everybody for their efforts here. Uh, and, and then just Katie, I, I, the one thing I wanted to, to state about the um, the, the noise reflection thing is, I don't think it makes sense to do anything with a decimeter, because really what the intent here is as a, a tool before anything's even built. Um, this is really something that is during the stage and argue, I guess, against um, any type of, of measurement of, of the noise levels, because I think really where I think this has the most benefit is during the permitting stage. Not as a long-term uh, measurement, because I think this brings more work for everybody to say, oh, we're gonna be called out every, every five days.
I totally agree. Um, and respectfully, I've sort of using um, Alder Sullivan's example. And also, I, I thought that this whole thing was brought about to try to handle some existing coops.
This is more along the lines of trying to set up a, or a, an ordinance for long-term. Yeah, actually, I would argue, it, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be writing rules for enough problems. Now, granted, it's, it's problems in city that makes people write laws, and I get that. It's not to make a law that penalizes any one or two people today. The goal is to make uh, an ordinance that gives guidance and can be, you know, good for everybody, both for um chicken keepers and for the neighbors of chicken keepers. And I think, I think what we have here is a compromise that achieves that. Is it, is it perfect? Pro- obviously not. Is it something that might be tweaked over the years going forward? Probably. But I really do believe that this is a, a good, reasonable um, attempt at, at putting an ordinance in place that really protects everybody, chicken keepers and neighbors of chicken keepers alike. And I, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Buck. Uh, does anybody else want to say anything? Can you raise your hands? Okay, I don't see any day's chance. All those in favor of the
What's the motion?
What's the motion, please?
The motion is to delete uh, the fee, the renewal fee. And then the, um, this is uh, under five, item number thirty, which is reflecting noise of a ban shell fact.
You know what? I, I would like to make a substitute motion that we only delete the, the renewal fee and that we keep the, the echo constraints.
Are, are you saying that they would have to reapply every year just without the fee?
No, no, I would, I, just, just the application fee. There's no renewal.
How do you know how many coops you have in town if something went to?
Well, they have to have the initial application. So it would just, just be to waive the renewal fee.
And this is Susan. I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions or comments on this new motion? Any further, okay.
Because it's a charter ordinance, it is expressly different from the state statute uh, which sets forth the two-thirds quorum requirement, which at least I am interpreting as meaning physically present. Um, I would hope that, that the members of the council can look at this and think about it. And if they think this is too broad, then we could certainly have a narrower uh, rule for establishing quorum, but still allow people to be not physically present um more than the uh, two that we allowed under the old rules. So um that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Larry, I got a quick question for you. Number one, the downside and legal challenges. Number two, are there any other communities in Dane County who have done it? The charter, I'm asking.
No, there's no other community that's done it. And in fact, without naming names, I have been very critical of what some other communities have done to deal with this. Uh, the point is, there is a state law that specifies that for cities, we need a two-thirds of members to participate to constitute a quorum. This, this ordinance would prevent somebody from suing the city, because we don't have any cases. It said, um, you know, they had a meeting and they only had three people in the room and therefore some action that they took at that meeting should be invalid for a violation of the quorum rules. Uh, there are no cases yet, but I would imagine there will be. Um, this ordinance would prevent that from happening, because this is definitely not a matter of statewide concern. And communities are allowed to regulate in matters of state law that are not statewide concerns. So I, I believe we would be the first, but that doesn't mean that isn't a good idea.
Thank you, Larry. Alder Ramsey?
Um, yeah, I, I think it's um, at first blush for me, it's overly broad. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm gonna go back to what I've said in the past and will continue to say is that I think um, outside of an emergency order that uh, council members, elected officials need to be physically present. Um, so I, I think if we, if we knock the physical quorum down to where it has no meaning, then you could have a council meeting where no council members or one or two in the mayor show up and members of the public show up, but none of their elected officials are there. So I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with um with that broad of a range that there is, there would be no physical, physical quorum. I mean, the only reason that we went away from a, a physical quorum because, was because of our emergency declaration. And once that's over, that's over. So I'm not quite sure why we don't go back to to where we were before.
Thank you, Alder Ramsey. Anyone else who may want to speak at this time?
That's just the uh, report from the attorneys. We also had the report from Drew Montour. I know he was on earlier. I don't know if he still is.
Drew?
I am.
Go ahead, please.
Go to your uh, memo here as well. So Drew, would you like to speak to it or you want me to speak to it?
Um, I mean, unless they have any specific questions uh, regarding it. I mean, it basically just summarizes the fact that uh, you know, that currently we're still uh, experiencing delays as far as supply chain and that we won't have the technology in place to have a hybrid meeting environment until at the earliest late July. So we would just encourage everybody to uh, adopt the previous arrangement that we had with uh, Moonstruck and that we would continue to, if you guys uh, adopt the April fifteenth meeting in person, that we would go ahead and stream our YouTube videos and there would be no uh, Zoom interaction.
Thank you, Drew. Anyone has any questions or comments? Otherwise, it's for information only, Mike, right?
Right. It is, unless the council wants to provide further direction, uh, because we do have that on the agenda listed as pandemic response discussion and direction from council. What we're prepared to do for the April nineteenth meeting is to meet totally in person without Zoom. That's our understanding and, and uh, to, to not do that would mean if we tried to, to do a hybrid, we'd have horrible sound problems while we're trying to introduce new council members uh, to the uh, to the format and get uh, get back to meeting in person, which hasn't happened in almost two years.
Thank you, Mike. Alder Buck?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I agree. My, I guess the direction I would push for would be that we do exactly what Mike laid out, that the current plan is we go into the meeting on the nineteenth, kind of the way we used to do it. Uh, we show up in person. Uh, the video cameras are on to, to stream us, but there's not an interactive component. Uh, the, you know, it, it basically is back to the old days because we cannot do a hybrid meeting at this time. At least we couldn't do it well. So I, I recommend that. I do have a really quick, different topic under the sun thing that I want to bring up. And that is, um, we're talking about the council meeting in person. I want to get back to city staff a little bit. Um, I think I may need help telling, to remind me where we are, where we stand today with city staff. But is our city staff all pretty much trying to still wear masks in the building? Or is it, do they have the freedom to say, you know, it's my personal choice and I'm not, I've chosen I'm not going to wear a mask? And the reason I ask, in my, my own company, um, I'm, I'm one of the few people who regularly still wears a mask. Rest of my company pretty much has gone to no mask and that's an acceptable option. Um, what, what, what's the status for the city staff?
Mike?
Robert, uh, it's a good question. And you know, you can see that, that gradually fewer and fewer people are wearing masks. We aren't mandating it. Um, it's strongly recommended by our policy, but
Um, it's strongly recommended by our policy, but that doesn't mean that we're uh demanding it of our employees.
Okay.
My observation at City Hall has been that fewer uh people are wearing masks. I think they know that most of their colleagues are vaccinated, although, you know, there there is potential to, even when vaccinated, to to become ill. Uh, but uh, we aren't mandating it. And, you know, uh for the council meeting on the the nineteenth, I think you might want to declare what you would like people to do. Um, and that's to ensure that even the most vulnerable or the folks who are most worried uh would feel comfortable attending in person.
Okay.
We do have an air filtration system uh that we use in the council chambers. We can leave the doors open. We can uh and we have right now, uh people spread out in the uh the council chambers, the tables that we use. So we can design it that way. Um, but the question would be whether the council wants to advocate or encourage people to wear masks.
Alder Kathy also?
Yeah, I thought City Hall, we were still strongly recommending uh face masks. And I thought that that's how we would proceed with the in-person council meetings, that we would strongly encourage everyone to have them on.
That's our current policy, yes.
Strongly recommend. Uh, anyone else who may want to speak on this topic? So, Mike, that's a, that that's about it, right? Shall we move on to the next?
That's it for this topic, yes.
Okay. We are on to the agreements. Item number one. Wisconsin DNR Outdoor Recreation AIDS Grant Agreement for Pheasant Branch Conservancy Trailhead Underpass Project. Need a motion?
This is Mark. I'll move approval is recommended by finance.
Need a second?
Your Burke will second.
Any questions or comments? This project will be delayed, but that's uh because of the county. That's how it is. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agreement with Wisconsin DNR Outdoor Recreation AIDS Grant Agreement for Pheasant Branch Conservancy Trailhead Underpass Project, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item number two. Agreement whether Carrico aquatic resources for operation and maintenance assistance at the Milton Aquatic Facility for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
This is Mark. I'll move approval is recommended by finance, which is to make this agreement subject to final city attorney approval.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Now, this is over Burke. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments now? So, okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agreement with the Carrico Aquatic Resources for operation and maintenance assistance at the Milton Aquatic Facility for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We are on to Ward of Bid Court Professor Services, item number one. Ward of Court to Lee Recreation, this is the playground equipment for Baskerville Park.
This is Mark.
Zero move approval.
Yeah, second.
By Alder Ramsey, second by Alder Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
And I will just remind everybody that that in addition to the park facility or the park equipment, that we are also improving access to make the park more ADA accessible. So in terms of access, that's gonna get improved on, and the park equipment is also gonna be ADA compliant.
So, Mark, that's 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 not just, it's not just the 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 fit, the the sorry, the uh recreational equipment itself, but you're saying it's even like sidewalks and and walkways and stuff like that at the park?
Those will be taken care of as part of the sidewalk reconstruction program that the city has.
Great.
We've already worked it out with with public works so that they will improve the physical access to the parks to make it compliant.
That is fantastic news. Thank you for that.
So I have a question for Matt and uh or whoever else. That when I look at the equipment here, it looks like it will be much smaller in terms of uh the equipment than it was before, Matt. Is that true or not true? I just will have about uh thirty-four things. Matt Anderson?
I don't know if he's still on, but but you gotta remember, this is a postage stamp sized park. We're trying to fill it up with with substantially the same amount of equipment that's currently there. We're not trying to downsize this at all. We're we're trying to to replace the functionality that's in the park already.
And also, Mark, if I may, also to uh save some mature trees, correct?
Correct.
And Matt is on. Uh, he's he's muted right now, but and Rebecca Rebecca is on too, and and I think she might have turned her camera on, hearing the question. Rebecca, did you want to respond to that question?
Well, obviously, Matt's usually the best one in terms of the parks pieces, but things that I would be thinking about too is the ADA compliance that we've mentioned. And how that's a large function of the pieces of equipment that we want to select and make sure that people can utilize or the most amount of people can be utilizing that piece of equipment. And I think Matt is on, but
I I apologize. I had to put children to bed, so I missed the question. Happy to answer.
Yeah, Matt, I haven't used that playground, but when I look at that and when I compare what we are putting there, so what you are putting there maybe is because of ADA thing is quite a bit smaller than what's there now. I didn't think it it has any swings or any of those things, so.
The the swings are are completely fine and are able to stay. We're replacing four component pieces of equipment that failed inspection. And need to be replaced for safety reasons.
Okay, all right, so that
We are, we're also extremely limited on that site. Any expansion of the playground footprint would require taking um some quality mature trees that I I don't think we wanna sacrifice to add additional play equipment.
So those slides, it's hard to tell from the picture, so there will be somewhat regular slides. It's not from where it looks like uh from the picture, it's very hard to tell.
This this is play equipment that is is rated for ages two to five in some cases, so um, which is, which is really the bulk of that play equipment that's at that current site now. There are some components, um, the merry-go-round or the revised modern day merry-go-round is an all-ages uh piece of equipment, but the slides are geared for younger children.
So functionally, it provides the same service to the kids of that age, whether it is now then.
I I think it's gonna be a much better site than what it is.
Okay, okay. Although then follow the motion to prove the Ward of Court to lead recreation playground equipment for Baskerville Park, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed. We are on to miscellaneous. This is the scenarios for November twenty twenty-two referendum to exceed the property tax level limits, so. Um, Mike, you want to start or or Mark, you want to start or anybody?
So Bill has put together three scenarios that he and and I and Brian have discussed in order to put together a recommendation to you as you requested a couple of months ago. Scenario one, as you see, is a hybrid of a variety of needs in the city right now, about half police, a little bit more half police. And the rest uh of general nature, communication specialist slash management analyst, an HR generalist half-time, and a park screw full-time. So that is our recommendation to you in the five hundred thousand dollar scenario. Uh, the second scenario is all police because we knew that there was a sentiment among uh many of you to make it primarily a public safety referendum for the staff referendum. And the third scenario is uh again, that hybrid in scenario one, but adding stormwater crew. Um, knowing the the need that we have for stormwater maintenance and compliance. And the growing and the mushrooming number of private uh stormwater maintenance agreements that we have. You recall the uh ridges of Pheasant Branch recently and and what we went through uh in in getting that one agreed upon. So uh this is, uh, these are three scenarios you might want to fix and match. But uh the administration team recommends scenario number one to you. And I should add too, um, you know, the new council might have different priorities. But we felt it was uh best to get this to you because you gave the direction of the referendum, talked about it. Um, many of you have been involved in getting not only the stormwater utility started, but um, uh, the second referendum approving the uh increase that will phase out Sunset in spring of twenty twenty-four. So it's for for this council, I think, to uh to weigh in uh with the experience that you've had over the years, looking at all of these issues.
So I'd start with two questions. Uh, one, you already mentioned, we have a new city administrator coming soon. And number two, there are at least uh, there are at least Alder Burke is uh retiring, so possibly uh Le Sullivan. So um, so there's somewhat newer council and uh and new city administrator. And then we have a strategic planning going on at a cost of hundred twenty thousand dollars. And uh I would say, you know, um, in in that case, uh, you know, we want to what the citizens priorities are and one thing which I have, I have been talking to people now for about past two, three weeks and uh one of the big priorities still comes up, the roads. I thought we were much better in roads, but I'm surprised that uh roads are still at the top. When I ask, I I'm almost surprised and shocked. So then when we ask Sean Stavsky and uh one of the things which I always hear from is, well, we don't have a staff to handle, even if there was more money. So so I think uh, from my perspective, you know, I think uh any position we put in here, there has to be a complete justification what is not getting done or how it's getting done now and will be better. How it will benefit the taxpayers, what happens if the patient isn't uh approved? Because this is just the regular process anywhere, whether it's a university or private group which happens and uh so I haven't seen such justification other than just saying the police had a twenty eighteen report, but uh so for any position which is proposed, uh, I'm aware of the, you know, five-year staffing plan, but uh n- not the kind of justification which I would like to see. So my main thing is that uh since there are three big things happening, new city council and uh and uh the new city administrator, and we are spending hundred twenty thousand dollar for a strategic planning thing just to decide that what the city's priorities are and uh long term, and then uh, you you know, that's that's my patients. So Alder Kathy also?
Yeah, I have a question on the HR generalist. Um, it's said in in the description here that it would help support recruitment. Um, is that for all positions in the city? Like when we just did the uh city administrator, we used um uh recruiting agency and they did a national search. That would kind of stay the same for these higher level positions or like with the police, would this position help with the police? And my other question is, are there other roles that are um delegated throughout the the office that would could go back like payroll or things that would go back to this position? Or this be primarily just for recruitment?
I can um take a shot at answering that and then Mike, if there's anything. Um, I I think if you look at a a city of our size and the number of employees we have, that um a single HR position uh would be a very low level of staffing. Uh, we're very fortunate to have Brian. He's taken on a lot and done a lot in the time that he's been here. Um, but I I think that there's a lot of things that we are paying for him to do as an HR manager that could be done by a support position. Um, this is a a halftime position. It would be a lower level HR position. The intent would be to do a lot of the more clerical um and functional items. Um, and recruitment is an area where we've seen a lot of turnover. Um, that's continuing. I think that's gonna be in place, given the status of the economy and the the world that we're in. And having somebody that can work with all the departments to help get recruitments posted and processed quickly uh would be a benefit to all departments. And frankly, it would be a backup, so we don't have just a single person. And if that one person is on vacation, that recruitment's um are are delayed in getting processed. And also looking to the future um gives us some level of of depth and cross-training and potential future succession planning um for that HR function. So I I think recruitment would be a main focus. I think it'd be helping to support Brian. I think it'd be to give us some additional um capability in that area. Because there are a lot of things within HR um that that we should be doing. Uh, Brian's taken on a lot, but he's one person with an organization with hundreds of employees.
Thank you.
Kathy, does that answer your question?
Yes.
And just to add to that too, Kathy, that one of the things that Brian really doesn't have the bandwidth to get to now is the seasonal hiring processes. He's tried to help those who do that, like Rebecca, uh, like the the golf course, like the the uh the library to some extent to uh for that, but we, you know, we bring on another uh three hundred employees during the summer. And uh we have two hundred full-time equivalent, and then with the seasonal crew, that's a large number out there, recreation parks, uh golf, et cetera. So, you know, there there are a lot of things that can and do happen with those employees that need to be addressed. And so the additional support from that perspective would be very important. Um, you know, Bill mentioned it, but if you look around for large number employee organizations, it's very rare to see just one full-time FTE uh for HR. And uh, as you know, Lori does uh a lot of payroll and benefits, so that's very helpful, and I don't want to diminish that at all. But for HR functions themselves, it's just rare for a two hundred full-time equivalent organization to just have one person.
So this role would take like all the summer hires and they would help with all the paperwork and all the other
They could could help with all of that. A lot of the minutia, the detail, the paperwork would really help uh free up Brian for more of the policy level type of uh things to address.
Okay, next one. Kathy, you're done? Okay, I'll listen West and then Alder Mark Sullivan.
Okay, I'm just curious, since we've only had Brian here for a short period of time. Who was doing all this huge amount of work before we got him? We didn't have a full-time person.
Right, we had a decentralized system. Um, I was the personnel officer, as you know, Susan. Um, from uh up until uh twenty eighteen, and then we hired a halftime uh HR manager, which was Melissa. Until we hired Brian as full-time in twenty twenty. And um, when I was heading it up, we heard constantly from the police department, we need help with recruitment, we need help with uh a a wide variety of things. And the council listened and and supported first the halftime position and then the full-time position because it was clearly beyond my bandwidth to handle, uh even in a decentralized system. And the downfall of a decentralized system is that there's not uniformity across the board among our employees. And so Brian brought a lot of that in with the the compensation plan, for example.
So, Alder West, you have more questions or that's it? So, Al West, do you have more questions or that's it?
No.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ellis Sullivan.
So, Mike, as much fun as it was. Doing doing the work to replace you. I'm wondering, um. Given some of the comments here, that it it may be more appropriate. To. Um, have this discussion as a council of the whole. But focused on one of those three scenarios. Um, that way you'd get more. Recent opinions. There are at least two of us that will no longer be. On the council. At the end of next or in in two weeks. Um, but I'm wondering if that might be more appropriate, it's just to say, okay, you know what? Let's vote on one of these three scenarios and really stomp it to death at a council of the whole meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ella. So anyone else who may want to speak, I I think, uh, I don't think we are, I agree with uh, Ellis Sullivan, I don't think. We are, uh, we should start with a clean slate and see where it goes, where the council of the whole or whatever we want to do. But we have to wait until this uh. The study where we are spending hundred twenty thousand dollars, so where we have all the priorities. When I looked at how I looked at them, it was quite a bit different than what uh. Um, that study is showing, so so I think uh, I would be. I'm I'm okay with Dr. Ellis Sullivan or the others, what I have said. I am not leave, it's up to if somebody wants to vote, but I think it's time to vote, wait. Elder Emily Coon.
Yeah, I, you know, sitting on personnel, I was thinking, can we have a chance to talk about it since it affects personnel? Just asking.
Absolutely.
Elder Burke.
Robert, you're muted.
Burke, you got to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, trying to be trying to be a good Zoom participant by muting myself in between.
I know you're, I I know you're new, so you don't.
Yeah, still making mistakes too, um. So. Just to get my two cents in, because I might not have another chance, I. I do really like. The path we're going down, I I understand that there's probably. Some discussions that still need to be had, but I guess. I just want to state for the record that I I really think. Referendum is a good idea, I think scenario one is a good starting point. And if. If, you know. The the next. Common council. Um. Ha- has has a, you know, wants to weigh in and and put. Put their mark on this, this is great, but I I really do hope. That um. It will. Look at. Something like scenario one as, you know, a a a good starting point and then. Tweak it if if it needs to be tweaked, so. But I really appreciate all the the effort that's gone into this. Um, and to to really. Point out some of the areas where. We're really struggling, certain things that I certainly didn't realize how much we were struggling. I mean, I knew we were struggling across the board, this is nice because it helps. At least set some priorities, so. Thank you for that, and um, I hope. This moves forward. Relatively soon, thank you.
Ella Sullivan.
Yeah, I would just want to to tag on to Emily's comment that, yes, this should go to personnel. But I think that also should wait till the next council, because both Robert and I. Will not be on personnel after next. After the next scheduled meeting. This is more, I think, of of future. Councils. Uh, direction rather than an old council, and I hate to be a lame duck about this. But I I think we. Personally, I think we should recuse ourselves from any of these discussions moving forward, since we're not gonna be around for the ramifications of them.
Okay, so Mike, you have enough input, I I don't think we need to vote on this one, so should we move on to the? Next item? Okay, so the next item is, um. Alright, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two honoring election officials is elder west and elder bark. Get quieted.
Gerdip, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I was, I sent an email either you and Robert could read together, if you want me to, I can read it, but I guess uh. It came from you, I have always given an opportunity, so per person who proposes to read it, so it's. Well, it's an honor for you to do it, so it's up to you. Would you like to read it, or Robert, would you want to read it?
Go ahead, Susan, and I'll 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 be back up if you need it.
Thank you. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two honoring election officials. Whereat, the government of the United States of America is a representative democracy in which the citizens elect. Officials to represent them. And whereas elections are a basic mechanism by which citizens elect officials to represent them. And whereas elections must be conducted in an impartial, honest and transparent manner. To keep the trust of the citizens. And whereas. This distrust has been created by those who do not like the results of the twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty presidential. And whereas twenty twenty elections in the state of Wisconsin. Are under attack by the Speaker of the Assembly. Who is using taxpayer money, six hundred and seventy-six thousand to investigate election fraud. Despite numerous vote recounts and court decisions determining no fraud. And whereas the city clerks of the city of Middleton. Lori J. Burns and Michelle Marks. Have conducted honest and efficient elections in all years, including twenty twenty. And whereas Lori J. Burns and Michelle Marks have accomplished all of the following tasks. And other necessary tasks in accord with all state laws and regulations. For every election. Finding accessible buildings that can accommodate all the voter traffic to use. As polling places, communicating election information to citizens. Training and scheduling enough election officials preparing the ballots. Okay, the tabulation machines and signage needed, preparing mailing and counting absentee ballots. Submitting the vote counts accurately to the proper authorities. Now therefore be it resolved. That the Middleton Common Council and Mayor Barr hereby affirm that they have observed honest election practices. And honor City Clerk Lori J. Burns and Deputy Clerk Michelle Marks. For conducting all elections with integrity in accord with state laws and regulations. Furthermore, all citizens of the city of Middleton should have confidence that their votes are counted. And recorded accurately in all elections. This resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on the fifth day of April twenty twenty-two.
Okay, need a motion to approve.
And I would make the motion to approve.
And I will, I will second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to. Uh, approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two honoring election officials, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion passed. Thank you for recognizing uh Lori and Michelle this way. Very much appreciated.
They have done fabulous job, and a long time ago, I worked on elections and I was really impressed with what they did.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Very of your praise.
We're very, very lucky. Uh, to have. Um. You know, both Lori and Michelle here, um. It's been an honor working with them over the last few years here.
Okay, next one is the committee appointment appointment of Sue Bradley to the community campus committee, so. Need a motion to approve.
This is Robert Burke, I would make a motion to approve Sue Bradley.
Need a second.
I am zero second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion.
Could you tell me something about her? Yeah, Gerdip, I have a question.
She was uh on the, um. Well, she was on the um, this landmark mission. She was also, she's uh also on the friends or library board. And uh, she was, uh, I had asked, uh. You know, the folks to put that uh in the packet, but I didn't see it.
It wasn't in the.
Yes, so she she's uh absolutely. Well qualified, she was also on the. Uh, city council in Portage, she was in the um, the. The Portage County Board of Directors and uh. Lots of things, so. Any any special question you want to ask? And this is because uh, one of the member who was on this uh. Community campus committee, she moved to Madison, so that's why this replacement is. Okay.
I I just, I just, she was on landmarks briefly and and I and I went back to find her application. And there wasn't anything on that either, and I I did a search, I couldn't find any applications for her, so I wasn't able to to see any of her background information, so.
Well, um, that's, uh, she lives in Middleton now and uh. She's on the friends of the library board, she's the vice president and uh. And uh, she was on the um.
Could we defer this till we get information, her application? Susan, I think we're trying to resk- get the meeting for the community campus re. Yeah, I understand this is. Yeah, we, I don't know if we wanted to defer anymore, but it'd be nice if when we have these appointments, if we have some background material, yes.
Okay, well. If you want to, I defer it, I have no problem, so I I will ask Lori to send me the application, so. But that's what it is, she's more than qualified.
I don't think we have a motion to defer, we're just saying that it'd be nice to have. Probably make this.
Okay, alright, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to go into closed session.
This is Alder Burke, I would make the motion to go in the closed session.
Need a second.
I'll second, this is Katie.
Okay, the motion by Ella Burke, second by Katie Nelson. All those in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, okay, Mike, so.
Okay, for those uh of the public who. Are not uh privy to the closed session, I will start moving you into the waiting room. We do have. An action item at the end of the agenda, just in case the council wants to take action. That doesn't mean that they will, and we can't tell you how long the closed session will be. Uh, you'd have to just stay in the waiting room. And then we would re-admit you at the end of the closed session. Thank you. So it'll take me a couple minutes. Um, one of you is not our MacBook guest, are you?
No.
No.
Okay, TA team participants, and you all look familiar to me. Yep. I agree. Thank you, Robert, I always appreciate your confirmation. So I think we're all set. So we have four issues. Um, we discussed in a closed session at finance, the Pleasantview Road. Properties for purchase. Um, many of you were not um at that meeting, so we can provide. That summary sheet for you, I think Bill can post it or Sean can share it.
I I just wanted to interrupt, do we normally not record closed session discussions?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely not.
Thank you for reminding me. Uh, the reason I turned it on in the middle of the meeting was because. Um, Jeremy had a problem with the YouTube video. Uh. No, hit the wrong one.
So we have.
Come on, hold on. Yeah, recording is still blinking, so we want to. Yeah, gotta find that, and I'm having a hard time finding it. Bill, can you find it?
It'd be in the upper bar, and then there'll be a drop down.
There it is, I see it, thanks.
Yeah.